Mr. Heller is on the phone. The Speaker's back, and he will be here during waiting on the microphone. So we're going to stand and we're going to present.
Let me just declare the United States of America and its citizens for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Heller is on the phone.
President.
Ms. Fovia?
President.
Mrs. Heller?
President.
Mr. DePulci?
President.
Ms. Hui?
Here.
Patz?
Eric.
Mr. Burr?
Eric.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Catell?
Eric.
Mr. Willis?
Mr. Foyle?
Chief Montal.
Here.
We'll call complete. Okay, so we will have public discussion, and if you do come to the podium, please sign your name or print it so that the secretary can be able to read the names for them, which does the minutes. So anybody here who wants a public discussion? Would you? Would you? John?
Paul McCutcheon, Madison, Pride. Sir. Couple things. Lots, lots of stuff going on social media lately. Before I get into that, though, don't you wish we had attendance like this when there was like volunteer stuff and whatnot? People can tell me when there's some kind of nonsense going on that people decide to go up to me. You know, I'm trying to make a clear story. People on social media going after President Heller. You know, you want to disagree with the man, that's one thing, that's fine. Some of the comments are uncalled for, and these comments were on official borough pages, one of which I'm no longer on, as I shared in an email to council. I made two comments throughout this ordeal on the Brookhaven PD police page. Comment number one, when this stop happened, why would the state police not call in? Why? It is a conflict of interest, no matter how you cut it. State police are right there. You radio in. And I have spoken to police officers from other departments and said, what would you do in this situation? You know what they all said? You would call the state police, so there could be no issues. I asked that question, it was not answered. Then, the press release where it was insinuated, oh, Mr. Heller was barely under a limb. I made a comment that that statement was completely uncalled for. I'll have you know, he was well, well, more than barely under the limb. Tried out approximately half the legal limit. I made a comment on that, and I said, how that was completely uncalled for, whatnot. Next thing I know, I'm banned from the Brookhaven Police social media page. I'm a resident of this town for forty-six years. I served on multiple committees in this town, and I had for a decade. I donate more hours to this borough than most residents of the town, and that's what I get for asking a question and making a statement. I am within my rights to go to the Attorney General because it is a civil rights violation being a government entity page. Will I do that? Probably not. Maybe to file a complaint, but that would be about the end of it. I also see on there, this woman standing next to, sitting next to me, Mrs. Heller being attacked. How despicable. And many of you in the audience are one of the ones that, you know, were saying stuff about her. You know, you know, you really need to check yourself. Mrs. Heller will attest that she and I have had a rocky relationship. We have not always agreed on a number of things, yet I never disrespected the work she does for this borough or anything like that, because she is one of the hardest working people here. Wherever there's something going on, Miss Heller gets involved, excuse me, involved. She gets her children involved. She's there from the beginning until the end, until the end. How dare anyone have the audacity to say something about our... So before you all come up here with your comments and whatnot, oh, one other thing. This I did not see, but it was told to me, so I do not know if it's true, but I have it from a good source. One of the things I serve on is the zoning hearing board. Mr. Bill Haas in the back of the room serves on the zoning hearing board. Somebody on the police page, because Mr. Haas supported President Heller, had a comment, hey, old man, get off the nursing home computer. That person's here today.
You're looking right at me, Floyd?
Yeah, I'm looking right at you.
Okay.
Who the hell do you think you are, sir?
Well, it goes both ways.
Who do you think you are to speak that way to a man who donates his time to this borough, who is probably knows more about zoning than all of us in this room combined?
It goes both ways.
And you're going to make that kind of a statement to him?
What was his first?
Let me tell you something.
What was his first comment?
Let me tell you something.
What was his first comment?
I don't care. Don't say that to that man. Go to the lady.
Yeah, you know, I live in Brookhaven, 220th Avenue.
I guess I am.
We got your comment, thank you.
I've said what I need to say.
Okay.
So again, all you check yourself.
As well as you.
Yeah, you're damn right I am. You're damn right I am. I hope I run into you someday.
That's a threat.
It's not a threat. It's a compliment. Continue the conversation.
That's a video. Nice.
Actually, Marley, the chairman of the...
Can you fix the microphone there?
Yes.
Wait, I don't doubt Terry's done a lot for this borough, but as somebody who sits as president and council, who can see, they can get behind a wheel after drinking and drive home, and then go on social media and bless it all over the place, that he doesn't trust the chief of police, or the police is disrespectful. In 2015, in February, this borough lost a resident to a drunk driver who happened to be a drunk driver. So for him to sit there and get behind a wheel after drinking as a public official, and then make a mockery of the police department and turn this borough into an embarrassment? That's disrespectful. And that's what I have to say.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Kathy Berger. I'm here. I'm just going to reiterate kind of what I said in my last meeting. Both Terry Heller and Chief Vice have always been extremely hostile to me in these situations that were very serious to me about an annoying neighbor, that I'm going to be on the council. So I really felt like I was heard a long time ago, and then last Sunday, when I saw that the Facebook page for the police, and as long as it was Chief Vice who put that out there, that he's going to shut it down, I was very concerned. And it got into, hey, Mike, Sunday afternoon, a little yucky, because I was like, why? Why is this happening? Why doesn't anyone from council tell us what's going on? So I guess I'm going to go up here to the mayor or someone on council about why that was. So I sent an email to every member of council, I think except for Nora, because I didn't have any members she knew. And then I also called four other members, and the jennies I called you, because you're not on the email, or I didn't think you were. So we went mid-walk, we were shorting up, complaining vociferously about it, just that out of every one council, only three members called me back. And all I had was a question, and the question was, what was it? Why did Chief Vice have to shut down that page that I really enjoy seeing criminals arrested? I like when it's the officer's birthdays, you know, happy Easter, happy Thanksgiving. To me, it was very, very unfortunate, but I was disappointed, because nobody, I mean, I've been here twenty-eight years. I gave my taxes all the time. Nobody called me, well, three people called me back, not to me, who called me back, who didn't, everybody knows who didn't, didn't. So my question for tonight, I'm hoping it's going to be addressed, what went on with the police Facebook page that was so horrible that he had to be ordered to shut it down? Why? And then, secondly, I can't remember what the other one was, and I was very upset for I, to hear that Chief Vice was put on administrative leave. And again, I'd like to know why. You know, okay, I saw the FOP letter, I see the notices, people can give speeches about it, but I'd like to know why? What is being investigated? What are the allegations? You know, during the past week, I sort of kind of tried to insult myself by hoping that council is doing what's best for all the residents of Brookhaven, the eight thousand some people. Not just people who come to meetings, not just people volunteer. It doesn't make you a better resident that you volunteer and you come to meetings. We're all still residents, we're all still paying our taxes, right? And we do elect the council. We don't choose the police department, we leave that in the hands of council to hire the best law enforcement. So that's what I'm hoping that will be answered tonight for me, for whatever else people need to know about. And that's all. I'm not angry with anybody. I don't think he's right, I don't think he's wrong. I don't know that I even need to know that. I just need to know that council is acting in the best interest of all of the residents with the trust that we put in you. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Anybody else? We'll go on to the next item. Would you have Chief Ramon Teller give a little report?
Good evening, Chief. Welcome on our behalf. I don't want to back the people. Put the, put the Tom Parton up. I wanted to follow your toes, Chief.
Yep. All right. So I want to talk about a little ball. Probably a lot to talk about, but you guys all know how I feel, wear my heart on my sleeve, and live by that right there. Give a lot of speeches over here, there's a nine eleven ceremony. While I'm here, I got to stay on task, okay? I can't get involved in things, but I'm here to talk about something really happening in the borough. So I met with Chief Vice on four fifteen twenty-four in reference to, you recall that the fire department, our EMS, and our police were involved. And the call went very well, and we met, I meet Chief Vice every day, discuss things about what's going on in town, keeps you abreast of things, I keep him abreast of things. And this type of call was dramatic, it was traumatic for people in a business in Brookhaven. And we mentioned to each other what a great total team effort we always had between police, fire, EMS. All right? So I'm going to leave it at that. I've lived in this borough for fifty-three years, I've been a fire chief for twenty-two, okay? So this call room dispatch, four fourteen twenty-four, at three fifty-nine AM. Cardiac arrest, large box floor in Brookhaven Borough. Subject down in the building, on a lift. Police dispatched. Three twenty-seven cars, if you don't know who that is, that's Brookhaven Police, the finest. One BLS truck out of Brookhaven Fire Company, one fire truck out of Brookhaven Fire Company, two crozier paramedics. We arrived at this box floor, we have a gentleman in his young twenties, in cardiac arrest, right? Doesn't have a twenty, right? So we get there, police naturally, they're on the street, doing their job. First in, AEDs in the car, ambulance arrived right behind them. Employees managed to get this man off the lift and on the ground. Well, when you're cardiac arrest, right? We don't have a heartbeat, we don't have a pulse, we're dead, right? It can only get better from there. Our police issued their AEDs, shock to me, started CPR, our ambulance arrived, assisted down with CPR. All right? Kept doing compressions. The AED advised, shock advised again. We shot him again. We're doing compressions. Our EMS people are securing the airway. Fire truck arrives, the dark room. We get down there, compressions are continuing, airways being secure, crozier paramedics have arrived to assist us. All right? Third shot advised. You never see this stuff. CPR stopped, we had a heartbeat. A faint heartbeat. Secured the airway, airway, innovative patient with the paramedics and our EMS staff, secured the airway, breathe for the young man, and then upon breathing for the young man, we managed to get him packaged up and on our cot. On our cot, this young gentleman started, you have tube now, you're threatened to wake up. The most of us have that on there, but it's got to be strong, undull. He started to physically wake up on the cot. So we continued to bag him, we got him in the ambulance. Our crews, we sedate, they sedated him in the back of the ambulance to keep him calm because his tube is there. So as we got him secured, the police and us, we all exited to this box floor, and then off we went to the hospital, all of us. On the way to the hospital, this man had a strong, steady heartbeat, and we were just bagging him slightly. So when we arrived at the hospital, this, our carers transferred from EMS, paramedics, to the crozier staff in the trauma room. That night, when we turned patients over and they're breathing and they have a pulse, that's a save for us. So this crew, these type, this crew of people, police, fire, EMS, saved a life that night. A twenty-year-old guy. We do the same thing day in, day out, whether it's a day-old child or a hundred-five-year-old person. This is what we do every single day. So I'm here tonight to recognize the people that were bombed and that saved that night. I don't doubt the gentleman is going to have a long, great recovery. We usually never see these people unless they return to the fire asset police station to the down, down earth. But I'd like to recognize the guys that were there that night, from the police department, Officer Greg Martin, Tom Zadie. Our EMS, or some of my crew chief, Mike Castro, I believe he's here. Where you at, Mike?
He's in the hallway.
Get over here, Mike. And this partner, I am Mark Parker, Mark Messer, come on in here, guys. And then going to fire truck that night, I had firefighter operator Brian Thomas, Brian's here with us. Chief Charles Leslie. And I was also one of the great ones. Crozier paramedics, remarkable, from the unit that responds for Brookhaven those at the time, and asked him, that was paramedic Dave Remics, and crozier chief paramedic Mike Morgan. We had the best of the best that night. What it went is show you, it took eleven people to save a life that night. It's worth every dollar, every investment that our puts in things, equipment, and the best of people, and the best trained people the borough puts on the street. So I just wanted to be up here to explain, I'm proud I am of my guys, the people, our residents for supporting us, council, everybody in here. I'm friends with everybody in here. I am. Because I think I can fix everything. You know? I think I can. It must have come from my father or somewhere, but I think I can fix everything, but I'm not even going to get into that. And also, that night, lives were affected by twelve employees of this business. And we got to remember these people. These people lived something dramatic. Most of the people in here never see something like that. We see it every day, but when you don't, we notified store people to make sure that they were looked after, and if somebody followed up with these people to get them some help, firefighters, EMS people, little, when we go through traumatic events. So it was a great night, we saved a life, it was a team, don't ever forget that word. When you have a broken team and a wheel falls off, everything goes to crap. But that's it. I want a little positive here tonight, you know, and some... I'm proud of my guys every single day. Sergeant Eastman, Sergeant Haddock, I think he said, please relay my message to your men. All right? Because your chief would have done it himself. That's all I...
Chief, I want to thank you on a personal note, because that was a worker of mine. So I thank you on behalf of the departments here, first day we came here. So thank you very much.
We're honored to do it.
Okay, the mayor's not here tonight. Mr. Wells, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President, Pro-Ten, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with our secretary's office. In the event any members of the public would like to peruse it, the salient points of the April twenty-second solicitor's report is as follows. Number one, the Ardenia Chary school property, I am pleased to report I continue to have positive conversations with the attorney for the Archdiocese of Philadelphia in trying to arrive at a purchase price that both parties are amenable to, and I remain cautiously optimistic that we will be able to do so in the near future. Number two, the delinquent sewer and trash fee accounts, again, I am pleased to report that our efforts in collecting those accounts are bearing fruit. To date, the borough has collected eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents in delinquent twenty twenty-three trash fee accounts, and eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents in delinquent sewer fees. Total collected thus far is twenty thousand five eighty-seven and eighty-eight cents, and as borough council is aware, we have done a more robust connection procedure this year, and again, it is bearing fruit. Number three, right-to-know mole request. Again, my office continues to assist the open records officer in responding to multiple right-to-know mole requests, both for borough business records and police department records. Recently, I have drafted and filed a memorandum of law and other supporting documents with the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records in relation to an appeal filed by a requister whereby he was denied certain requests for police department records. And again, I have provided a copy of that memorandum of law to all members of borough council and the mayor's office. Again, and I am cautiously optimistic that we will be successful in that particular appeal. Number four, four thousand eight hundred block of Greenwood Street. Again, my office issued recommendations to the borough building inspector, the code enforcement officer, and the zoning officer regarding outstanding building, zoning, and code violations relative to this particular property with specific reference to the International Property Maintenance and Housing Code. Five, proposed towing contract. As council is aware, I have drafted and prepared a proposed one-year towing contract between the borough of Brookhaven and Steve Alonzo's Towing, Inc. This is something that will be considered for borough council's consideration at its meeting on Monday, March 3rd, May the sixth. Six, the consolidated collective bargaining agreement with the FOP. I am pleased to report that the FOP has countersigned that particular agreement, and we now have a fully executed collective bargaining agreement with the FOP covering the years from 2020 to 2024. Seven, the ethics statement. Again, I remind all members of borough council, the mayor, and all the professional staff that the deadline to file the ethics statement is May the first, 2024. That ethics statement must be filed with the officers of the borough secretary, in particular, Mr. John Wilwood. And with that, Madam President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Catell, would you have a report tomorrow?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things I do want to mention is the 2024 street resurfacing project. The contract with A and D have been executed. We're waiting to get the final handout approval to proceed with that. If everything goes, A expects to start in early May. On the gym floor refinishing, he has to get some prices to act the wall lines to the port. The contractor has noticed four divided prices for a single quartet of eight hundred dollars, two quarts of fourteen hundred dollars, and for three quartet, eighteen hundred dollars. If council wishes to proceed with that, we'll have a change order for the regular council meeting. Memorial Park field free embankment, received bids through, ended in online bidding platform for the work we're installing, the annual between the fields there. We received nine bids ranging from fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Again, we'll cancel to consider award of that, delivered with JMC contractors, delivered about fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. There was an alternate in the project to install accessible walkways to those fields, and that's for another forty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. So again, we'll consider that next meeting. DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Application. There is a grant opportunity, obviously parks and recreation, that application is due May thirtieth. It's a...
That ethics statement must be filed with the officers of the borough secretary, in particular, Mr. John Wilwood. And with that, Madam President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Kattell, do you have a report to make?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things I do want to mention is the 2024 street resurfacing project. The contract with A of Damon had been executed. We're waiting to get the final handout approval to proceed with that. If everything goes, Damon expects to start in early May. On the gym floor refinishing, I was asked to get some prices to act up the wall lines to the port. The contractors' bill is 450 prices for a single quartet of $800. Two quarts would be $1,400, and for three quartet, $1,800. If council wishes to proceed with that, we'll have a change order for the regular council meeting. Memorial Park Field free embankment. Received bids through, ended in online bidding platform for the work we're installing, the annual between the fields there. We received nine bids ranging from $59,500 to $212,250. Again, we'll cancel to consider award of that, delivered with JMC contractors, delivered about $59,500. There was an alternate in the project to install accessible walkways to those fields, and that's for another $43,830. So again, we'll consider that next meeting. DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Application. There is a grant opportunity for obviously parks and recreation. That application is due May 30. It's a process up to $230,000 and required a 15% local match. Council wishes to move forward on that level resolution to apply next meeting.
Is it 15%?
15% match on that. Manhole Rehabilitation Project, this is in the area of Tru-Territorial Sores Treatment Plan, as you're aware. DEP has issued a moratorium on the flows over there due to extreme high flows during wet weather events. One of the audience to correct that would be to repair some leaking manholes. For that, we're also receiving online, seven bids are received ranging from $41,610 to $138,700. Our recommendation to award to Swerve Incorporated, the amount of $41,610. And the only thing I have is Cobra Boulevard and Chandler Drive, Shepherd Street. When streets were repaid, the crosswalk was never returned, never repainted. The crossing guard requested that be put back. We don't check the reason why it wasn't put back because the corners aren't 88 combined. We don't have any 88 curb cuts there. And we shouldn't have a crosswalk going to a full curb. So I'm going to ask council to authorize us to bid a project to put 88 curb cuts at those locations. And that will begin for next meetings. And that's all I have.
And then Shepherd and Wilwood.
Yes, Chandler and Shepherd and Wilwood.
Then we need to count our reports. Mr. Heller does have a report.
Sorry, I'm not a full report and statement at the May meeting in person. I just have one motion to moving May, June meetings to 8 o'clock PM and advertise as such.
So did anybody hear about his motion?
Soon my work schedule will change back to normal after June 24.
Okay, so this is the May and the June council meeting. The time to start the meeting would go from 7 to 8 PM. And it would be an advertisement in Daily Times. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a question. How much is it going to cost the borough to advertise the changes for these? Do we know?
No.
So, so if it's my understanding, the only reason we're changing the meeting is to accommodate President Heller's work schedule. Is that correct? So we're being asked to start a meeting later, have residents come in later, just to accommodate the president. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
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 Okay, it's either yes or no for the time change for the meetings in May, June. Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Phobia?
No.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. DePliggi?
Yes.
Ms. Sawicki?
No.
Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, no. Passed 4 to 3.
Thank you. I sent out a full report and statement in person today. Thank you.
I do have no updates tonight. We'll have the financial next meeting for bills to be paid for the May. So we will be going to the next list for the next one. Do you have a report?
Um, yes. And prior to, um, to giving an update on the committees, I would just like to make a statement on the disciplinary action taken against Chief Weiss. Um, for the record, I am strongly against how this situation was handled. Um, the welfare of our officers and providing a safe working environment are extremely important. There have been claims brought to our attention that are certainly necessary to investigate. However, I think that this was the wrong way to go about it and that the chief should have been given a chance in front of council to answer questions about some of the accusations before council took disciplinary steps. I believe everyone is entitled to be heard in a fair process regardless of the ultimate outcome. And now on to committee updates. Um, the Technology and Communications Committee uh, last met on Thursday, April 11. And we drafted the April newsletter and discussed continuing improvements and updates to the website in an effort to make the borough website the primary source for all of the most up-to-date borough information. Um, I would also like to address the Facebook, uh, the borough page Facebook concerns. Um, in an effort to update our borough's social media policy as a corrective action for some of the recent issues resulting from social media use by borough officials and employees. Borough Council is in the process of consolidating all our official Facebook pages, which include the borough police department and rec board pages, as well as maybe a few others, um, into one single page. This change is not intended in any way to censor the police. But rather, it will streamline updates and allow for validation of the information being provided. Um, the information on the new official borough Facebook page will be purely factual and informational in nature, but will be the same type of information that you're used to seeing on the old pages. We're still working on the details of who the administrators will be and how historical information will be made accessible. Um, but we'll let you know once we finalize these details. Um, and we hope to have a new borough page ready within the next couple of weeks. So we will keep you posted on that.
Mr. Heller, do you have any?
On Wednesday, April 3, uh, I attended a meeting with the Rec Board President Tom Dykes and softball commissioner and board to review plans and timelines for the multi-campus facility. Um, that should be done hopefully within the month of July or August, depending on their softball schedule. Uh, the Rec Board and Parade Committee held our spring playing dance for the fifth and sixth grade students from Tendalco School District, Christian Academy, Holy Family. On Friday, April 6, um, we had over 125 participants who enjoyed and showed off some of their dance moves. On Saturday, April 6, we assisted with the setup for the show event, which Dave will fill in, um, how that went. Uh, I also attended the 2024 baseball and softball opening day parade that was held on Saturday, April 6. Wanted to thank both baseball and softball commissioners, boards, coaches, volunteers, public guards, fire department, and police department for a great start of the baseball softball season. On Thursday, April 11, um, I'm sorry if this all review already gave that before. Rec Board hosted the murder mystery dinner on Friday, uh, April 12. Mr. Dykes will provide more details on that event, I'm sure during our public discussion. Um, the Rec Board held another artful aging event on Sunday, April 14. We had 29 young ladies making fabric flowers. We went to have a shout-out to Jess Mayer from the Rec Board, who is spearheading these events. Couldn't do it without her. There is no craft being held for the month of May. I want to thank the Real Church for their invitation to attend the Women's Ministry Tea Room on this past Saturday, April 20. I'm grateful for the invite, not only me, but members of our spiritual communities. I want to thank the baseball for the invite to attend their fundraiser this past Saturday night. Again, it's very important to help and donate to our youth organizations. A special thank you to Brookhaven Boy Scout troop for 93 and assistant scout Stephen Jaddish on his Eagle Scout project. This troop, under Stephen's leadership, built six benches that were placed throughout the Hallie Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary this past Sunday. Um, I sent the pictures to Christine Jackson, who is Hallie's mom. And she stated all of that, this just leaves her speechless. She said that the beauty created from the tragedies losing Hallie is just unbelievable. We are forever grateful to all of you. For those that don't know, the Hope for Hallie Foundation gathers attention to mental health and suicide awareness by breaking the stigma, encouraging conversation for mental health and suicide awareness. The next sanctuary meeting is in the process of being scheduled either for this weekend or the following weekend. So also a reminder that the Borough Hall is going to be closed tomorrow due to the elections. We also have a family day meeting scheduled for this Thursday, April 25, at 6:00 PM. And it will follow the, and the Rec Board meeting, multi-meeting will follow right after that. And just because that, um, the mayor is not here, I just want to remind everyone to please mark their calendar for the Memorial Day service, which is scheduled for Thursday, May 23, um, at 6:30 PM. And I want to let from Harry back, he's been gone for a few weeks, so he was greatly missed. And again, I want to thank the officers and the paramedics for, um, saving one of my coworkers' lives. So thank you again. And that is the end of my report at this time. Okay, thank you. Mr. Pappas, do you have a report?
I do not have a report, but I have three motions. Motion one, motion to appoint the Philadelphia law firm of Clark Hill to perform an internal investigation and performance review of the Brookhaven Police Department.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, question, will council meet with the attorneys who are conducting the investigation before they begin their work? Do we know that yet or not?
Counsel will welcome to do so. I believe two attorneys who would be assigned to this case would be amenable to meeting with members of the Borough Council.
Very good. I know I, as do my colleagues, I would presume, want to ensure that this investigator, these investigators, excuse me, conduct a thorough review of the police department. It is imperative that they speak with each and every officer, including Chief Weiss, individually and off police property, so as to get accurate and credible information to present to council and the people of our county.
Agreed. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, not here, none. Okay. Motion's approved. Mr. Pappas?
Second motion. To ratify the placement of Police Chief Michael Weiss on paid administrative leave for an indefinite duration.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Question, uh, were all members of council able to weigh in on the removal of Chief Weiss prior to today's meeting? And if so, how were they known about? Does anybody have an answer to that question? Okay, well, while I take any and all allegations against Chief Weiss very seriously, and I support a thorough investigation to uncover all the facts, I vehemently disagree with the process that the majority has taken under the direction of President Heller, which goes against the initial recommendation made by our very own solicitor.
Uh, Mr. Burke, let me add that I was perfectly in favor of waiting for the investigation to play out. Two member, two, two police officers that came forward were harassed last Wednesday in Red Oak.
And so what about the officers that are being harassed right now, President Heller?
Majority, the majority of the police stated that they would not speak to the gentleman on site.
I'm glad that President Heller can join us today.
That was, that was not at my direction, but the meeting is continuing.
Uh, Mr. Burke, just to correct you, you were on the email that was sent out for communications on the page.
Yes, I was, but there was a councilperson that was not.
And who was that? So Mrs. Sawicki was called twice and she was actually hung up on, uh, she hung up on the person that contacted her to filter her in.
Well, that's interesting because she didn't hang up on myself or Councilwoman Phobia.
Well, that's what makes this political.
I'm not the one, but you are. Yes, you are. George, yeah.
Motion in a second.
Was a motion in a second.
Okay, yeah. More than one?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We're going to take a roll. Yes, to approve? No, to not approve. So, Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Phobia?
No.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. DePliggi?
Yes.
Ms. Sawicki?
No.
Uh, Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Burke?
No.
Passed 4 to 3, 4 yes, 3 no.
That's a conflict of interest. Why, why does public get to vote when he's directly involved?
That's a conflict.
Okay, folks, folks, there is a second public discussion. Please save it until then. Let's move on.
Is there another motion, Mr. Pappas?
Uh, one third motion. Bushman designate Sergeant Tim Haddock as the acting chief of police for the borough of Brookhaven for an indefinite duration.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Uh, I have a question. Actually, I have two questions. Number one, is Sergeant Haddock in his new role as acting chief receiving any additional compensation? Do we know?
Pursuing to the collective bargaining agreement, thank you. He will be entitled to additional compensation.
Fair enough. Is Sergeant Haddock in his new role as acting chief permitted to implement any new police policies or procedures that officers will be expected to follow and carry out?
Again, that was only issued at the direction.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion in a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, same thing. Yes to approve, no to not approve. Uh, Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Phobia?
No.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. DePliggi?
Yes.
Ms. Sawicki?
No.
Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Burke?
No.
Again, it's 4 to 3. Can I conclude? Is there anything else that I have?
Okay, thank you, Judge. Um, Mr. Burke, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Uh, Madam President, Pro Tem. The ordinance committee met this past Thursday, April 18 at 6:30. In attendance was the Brookhaven Borough Residential Building Inspector, Mr. Sean Guthrie. I want to thank Sean, uh, Mr. Guthrie, excuse me, for his attendance and taking time to answer questions from committee members. One of the questions raised by a committee member uh, was if we could review the borough's contract with general code, channels are E-code. Committee would like to get all borough ordinances currently not on E-code to be uploaded to it. Uh, some other members had mentioned the possibility of restarting the process of adopting the trash can ordinance, which I remember several years ago being on the committee at that time. So we will discuss that. Our next meeting is, um, escapes me off the top of my head. It's the third month, or third Wednes, excuse me, the third Thursday in May. So all are welcome to begin at 6:30. Um, before I, uh, end, I do have a couple of comments that I would like to make. Last month, I spoke about the significance of an oath, as well as how seriously I take any oath that I pledge. It's for this very reason that I feel compelled to express my frustration and anger, you couldn't tell already, over the process that was enacted in order to place Chief Weiss on administrative leave. As I stated before, I take any and all allegations against Chief Weiss seriously. And I do support a thorough investigation to uncover all the facts. Keep working facts, ladies and gentlemen. Instead of calling for an in-person executive session to discuss placing the chief on administrative leave, the president sent an email chain asking members of council to weigh in. The initial recommendation from the borough solicitor advised us to take a vastly different approach, wherein council and the mayor would have met with the chief to respond to the allegations against him. I personally heard from several officers who are distraught by what the majority of council has done to the chief. Many of these officers will be working for their sixth chief in almost as many years. Several of the officers expressed concern over the thought they may be targeted by a select few of their colleagues who did not like Chief Weiss. Some have even mentioned they may look for employment with another department. Now, believe me, they will be easily hired by any other department or law enforcement and agency as they are some of the finest cops you'll ever meet in your life. Our police officers have gone from working for several different chiefs and a police department that was totally undisciplined to one that became accredited. department that was totally undisciplined to one that became accredited and a premier law enforcement agency. This was all done because of the leadership of Chief Michael Weiss. I asked my colleagues on council, what kind of police department do you want? Do we really want to go backwards? Do we really want to see many of our dedicated police officers leave us? Will that make our community safe? I sure don't think so. Let me be clear and repeat myself. I take any and all allegations made against Chief Vice seriously. I want a full, transparent investigation conducted to gather all of the facts. But I have to be honest with you, the people of Brookhaven, I have not seen nor heard any facts that would make me want to put Chief Vice on any kind of an indefinite suspension. What we have seen, however, are certain members of this council ignoring recommendations of our own solicitor and taking actions based on their own perceptions rather than the facts, and without inviting participation from all affected. But yet we hear, here we are, folks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. DePlicy, do you have your report, sir?
Good evening, everybody. Want to recap, on April 6th, Saturday, April 6th, Brookhaven hosted a shredd and recycle event that ran very smoothly. There was a little bit of concern that it coincided with the opening day parade for the youth league sports and baseball and softball. It ran smoothly. I would say there was about 150 showed up to turn in their recycling. Very smooth, we never had long lines. And because it ran so well, I'm looking to, in October, to try to set up another event of the same time. I'm looking mid to late, mid to late October before, maybe the weekend before the annual trick or treat event. I'd pick that weekend. So, I'm working with the recycle and trash company, and we'll try to put one together this year. The month of May is chipping month, so the Borough chipper shredder machine will be available on certain days through the month of May. Certainly call the, call the Borough, get yourself on the list if you have limbs and branches you want shredded down from your home. The dates are Monday the 6th, Wednesday the 8th, Friday the 10th, Tuesday the 14th, and Thursday the 16th. So, that's five days available. Though, like I said, if you have anything you want to get rid of from yard debris from sticks, please get on the list to have Public Works guys come by and get your debris. And the last thing I have, it's mulching time. There's a couple of parks in Brookhaven that are on the list for this year. Looks to be Memorial and Somerville Park this year. I will have a more thorough report in May, leaving on public to handle the mulching. That's my report. Thank you.
So, that's, that's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We do have some inspectors. Mr. Wesley, did you want to make your report, sir?
Not to report tonight, ma'am. Thank you.
And I have Mr. Polo, I think he's still on the radio. So, Becky, does any of the inspectors have a report? There's nobody else here. Okay, we're going to get into the second public discussion. If you need to, very briefly, still, please run along.
Um, it's actually a two-fold thing for record. One is ongoing programs, and one is request some things to be done at the park. So, looking right now, ongoing programs. Pickleball will continue on Mondays going through June, then through May through June, and they're going through, happening with that. We have our HIIT exercise classes on Saturday mornings, there'll be couples of, on this Saturday, a couple, we're looking for a couple in June. And we're also trying to see about adding them on Tuesday, on a couple Tuesday evenings throughout May and June. So, that's something good for that. For those who are interested in yoga, we'll be doing outdoor yoga class starting the end of May. Be out behind the building. Charles, what time is that?
I believe it's 6 o'clock. Let me double check right now.
It's 6 to 6:30.
Yeah, yeah, let me double check.
In the mornings?
Yes, in the morning. You will put that in check.
You're up, aren't you?
The indoor flea market is June 2nd. It's here in the building. It's amazing, from 9:00 to 3:00, we're looking for vendors, as well as people coming out and seeing what they can buy. Archillaging will be taking a new date for June. There's some other issues with that. Dungeon Jack and Dragon, same thing, there's some issues with dates for that, we're working on that. Starting June, be on Wednesdays this year, Wednesday mornings, it's 10 or 10:30. Folks on blankets will be back at Eden Park, for the little guys. Little Town Library comes out, the library comes out, and does all sorts of things, they greet the kids, they have hands with them, singing, all sorts of fun stuff. If you're available, and you have children, or you're not seeing kids, it's really fun time doing that. We are working on summer concerts, right now, the Father's Day weekend, Saturday, June 15th, we'll plan a concert for them, and also for Thursday, July 18th. And Family Day planning meeting is just this Thursday at 6:00, as well as Thursday, May 30th. There is one change in the schedule. The June meeting for Family Day meeting will be on June 20th, not the 27th. And the July meeting will be July 25th. So, if anyone wants to help in planning for Family Day, or just wants to help for the day, come out and join us, we're lots of fun with that. Things that did happen, the biggest one was the murder mystery. We had about 39 people come out, they had a fun time. A good evening, fun actors, fun minutes. We had about seven people, I think it was, from the audience who were participating as actors, as well as the paid actors that came in. Marino's catering catered the event for us, which was really nice. And just seeing the murder in Central Town, the murderer was Humphrey Bogart. So, it's kind of fun that. Okay, so changing over to things that we like to see done, had parts and things, changes. We did bring, we gave them up with the trees and bushes at Eden Park were put in as barriers, psych barriers, they're all dead. And we make sure those get replaced from the escrow from Popeyes, on their own expense. Please, thank you for that. We do have electrical issues at Eden. We found it last year where we were doing the concert, and Hot Dog Roller was on, the freezer was on, and we turned all the toaster oven, heat up a pizza, and we lost all the lights. So, we need to have that separate record system checked out, if that can be done, if possible. Also, if we could add some electrical plugs or things to the sevens, we can add weight in there for the concert, if you're ready. Then, two things we need to ask us to jive about, get this rule about, for permission, legally wise and from council, is, would be, is it permissible for Record to block off the back entrance, the back part of the parking lot of the building, on one, possibly two nights a week, Monday and Tuesdays, for doing pickleball? As long as we have barriers on.
Again, with the
Permission of council.
Permission of borough council, and then we also want to confer with the police department as well.
Right. I had talked to them before, and they were okay with it.
If we give both our police department and borough council on board, and I don't see that being objection, then I think that certainly is permitted.
So, I guess we may need for doing that. And what we would do is actually draw the pickleball courts in chalk with sidewall chalk, so that it rains, it washes it away, and doesn't pop or anything, and we put them back up again. And then the other big thing is, this is one that I've been harping on for a couple of years, the strip of property between Brookhaven Road and Marlin Edwards on Big Bay or Arlington there, that 20-foot section.
No.
No, well, no. It's been two years. We've gotten no progress, no reports back from the person who owns it. What is our next step? Is that the Borough trying to take it by any domain, or whatever? Because right now, it's holding up progress of trying to develop that part as far as making it a, a very passive park, but putting in benches and bushes and trees and things like that.
Who is cutting the grass right now?
Public Works is, it's a combination of Public Works and the Neighbors. And the Neighbors also are wondering, because the bushes that are on the property are on that property, but they're extending over into the neighbor's yards. And I know the neighbor on Brookhaven Road is cutting parts of it down, keeping it trimmed down, because they can't get out of the driveway because of the high bushes.
And I know that we reached out before, because our next police scout project, who are putting benches along there, that he's also in that conversation as well.
Let me resurrect that file again, Thompson, and I will be
Somebody can kind of pick that up. I'd like to kind of pick. Turn on the bar. Work on it. Now, that's pretty much for reference. Look like it's your time.
Anybody got any trouble with this question?
Sure. Hello? Hi. Hello, people. Jim, again, Mount Vernon Avenue. I've lived here for 26 years. I don't know any of you guys, I don't know many of you, I know Stephen's wife in the back, because they're by the acres. Okay? I went through hell last year fighting the Pendelco school board. And you guys make it look even better, because you guys are so chaotic. Have you ever known, I've been to two of your meetings. So, your votes are always four to three, isn't that amazing? I'm not on the fourth or third. The only thing I ever, I didn't know anything about what was going on in this town, so I really didn't care at the time. As long as my family's happy and safe, I'm good. Okay? My son is friends with Mr. Heller. I've had dealings with Mr. Bucks. I had no fight in this fight. The only reason I found out about it, because it was put on baseball. Okay? That's the only way, that's the only way I knew about this. I thought it was childish to put the, regardless of who's right, who's wrong, it was childish to go on baseball. It's personal. It's also personal to get rid of the police chief. I'm sorry, that's the way I see it. I sit here, and I watch your votes. You have a president, like I said, my son's friends with him, and he speaks highly of him. Sorry. Fine. You can't have him cast a vote that attains the head. No, you can't do that. That's what I mean, you've got, some of you guys up there make the school board look geniuses. We can put it that way, but they're idiots over there. But I'm sitting here, I'm listening, you guys, last one, end this one. You get rid of the police chief. Why? Why? Because he's been investigated by the FOP? Let them investigate. You know? You have people saying, well, he should never have been. Well, they have opinions too, but the vote is, but it's all the vote. It's the same. It's the same. And when I got all things put originally, my thought was, and I put it out there, I don't trust you guys to make the decision on spending 1.5 million dollars for a piece of green land. Now, what are you going to do? You're going to put basketball courts there, so the kids from Toby Farms and the kids from Upland can come and ruin it for everybody. We have green space, green space now that we don't use. I see it. I see it. But you're going to raise my taxes, and it's only going to be, oh, 15,000, lunch, and you can afford that. Yeah, you're right. But when you build something there, or somebody has to cut grass or maintain that, then we got a problem. And I don't think anybody really thought of that. But I'll tell you what, next, next one's going to come, I'm bringing popcorn. And one last thing. Mr. Burke, you sent your newest person on the board.
Yes.
One of the new ones? Don't buy that corruption.
I just want to say something really quickly in response to that. I don't believe, the majority of my colleagues are corrupted. I really do believe that everyone on here voted the way they did because they felt in their heart hearts it was the right thing to do. I don't think it was corruption. Now, you can question the president, I'm not going to touch that one, but I honestly do believe that my colleagues did what they did because they thought it was the right thing. Whether I agree with it or not, is a different story.
But I thought you were supposed to be innocent to prove it guilty. If he's been investigated by the FOP, they have jurisdiction over that. Not you guys. Not you guys.
He did it.
Right? When you let him go, you're telling us he's guilty. You think he's guilty. And listen, I'm in the two East, and it's guys my witness. I thought it was Terry. Because I didn't know who Terry had all of a sudden. But I see you sitting there as president, I'm like, Terry's a woman? I'm with you.
Hi, I'm Yoda, or Yoda, I'm Slay. One, I have a question. And this was drawn up on the post. What was the impetus for changing the towing company? It seemed kind of, everything happened at the same time, everything blew up. Is there a specific reason why we ended, Brookhaven ended the contract perpetually with the other towing company and started with the Lorn Hill again?
We have no contract with any towing companies.
Why was I allowed to operate for 16 months then? Why was I allowed to operate for 16 months?
We're not in a contract.
We have no written contractual relationship with any towing companies. If anybody tells you to the contrary, that is a falsehood.
So, I operated for 16 months without a contract?
Sir, again, when you're recognized by the chair, you can come up and ask questions. I'll be happy to respond to your question.
Okay, when my attorney comes in, we'll figure it out.
Absolutely.
I was advised by my attorney not to talk yet.
It just seemed kind of bizarre that any of these people have a contract. Maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm reading more into it than I was. All right. The second thing, is there going to be, or is there right now in place, a policy? Needed, though. A policy for employees and elected officials, and how they present themselves on social media?
So, that's one of the things that we are looking at, that Nora discussed earlier. So, we actually have meetings to discuss all those policies. There is one that we have as a handbook, so it's ready. So, that's why we're looking at that practice. There have been two that have come out from the ordinance, or how it can be done. So, that's why I'm tripping, for example, in the next week, so we can develop a policy.
And I thought that, you said we have the press meeting, and I thought it was after the day. And then this case, we have six. That's impact. I was, I was wrong. But I
You're more than welcome to. Like I said, we encourage it. So, I think our next half meeting is going to be actually on, it's the 9th, not by, it's the 16th. And actually, we're going to have somebody come to speak on that social media.
I know you're probably, you're early now, David, but did you have an opportunity to discuss the taping of the, the actual live shooting? I did not attend the last meeting as well. I don't think that we came up in that meeting, but we do have it on as one of our agendas to actually look at.
I think we actually, we can touch on it, but there's definitely a lot of
Yeah. So, it's
So, the how, that's all I share.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Okay, um, cool. Uh, being informed to develop, telling, telling times is not my deal, for example, or paying the tuition that's in the, in the... Um, and my dad was telling me that, that many residents...
Coming out, brother. Gangway, come on, make a while.
All the players who wild used to back up have made decisions that have consequences. Unfortunately, these consequences feed over going to the community. Mr. Heller took a risk in appealing to the court's public opinion or support. As we all know, opinions are like noses we all have once. After reading Mr. Heller's post, many residents smelled something fishy, but we were not sure what it was. But whatever cannot be refuted, but what cannot be refuted is that the president of the Brookhaven Borough Council made statements on social media that included accusations against the Brookhaven Police Department and clearly stated his lack of confidence in his department. To me, that is unacceptable. If, as Mr. Heller stated, he was completely confident in his innocence and believed he had been drinking responsibly, as is his right, perhaps he should have trusted the process. Had Mr. Heller done that, he could say he took the hybrid, followed the law and allowed the law, uh, the lawful process to prove an innocent. Instead, he started work worth on a platform where keyboard warriors can support or criticize and speculate ad nauseam. And the most unfortunate result is the fission in our community and adding unnecessary, unnecessary challenges for our police officers. Being stopped by a police officer is unnerving. Being stopped and suspected of DUI is downright scary. In Mr. Heller's defense, there is no such thing as slightly under the limit, as, as stated by Chief Weiss. There is a limit established and a person is either under or over that limit. Never heard of anybody being slightly over the limit. Never heard policemen utter those words, so I think we have to be fair. So as the process cleaned out, Mr. Heller was found not guilty and all charges have been dropped, which I couldn't... The aftermath of this debacle has now become a bigger issue than the original traffic stop. One, our borough police officers on the street are now experiencing blowback while trying to perform their job. And I've spoken with, I'm not going to make this up. I spoke with some officers. Trying to perform their job to serve and protect our community. Our officers are being challenged by people who are referencing statements made by the president of the Borough Council. This is unacceptable. Two, our police department is being accused of people having, uh, of living in neighboring communities of having a hit list for targeted traffic stops. We should not have to defend ourselves against something like that. The president of council is continuing to, uh, be unaccountable for his role in this situation. This is another example of a politician accepting accolades for the positives as listed by Mrs. Heller, but not being accountable for his actions since March, June. Mr. Heller is forcing the Brookhaven Borough Council to remediate a conflict between the chief of police and the president of council, which resulted from a knee-jerk reaction by him. He stated that he needed to get ahead of the situation, but by his own words, expressed confidence that he was not in violation of the DUI laws. Mr. Heller's consistent behavior of deniability has not instilled me with confidence in him regarding his ability to serve as president of council. Over the years, I observe, I observe good people making mistakes that unfortunately do not be undone. I do not believe that as an elected official and president of the Borough Council, Mr. Heller was able, will be able to overcome the statements and accusations that he made. Having stayed publicly no confident, confidence in the police department, in the borough in which he lives and serves, is harsh and undermines the ability of that department to effectively enforce the law and protect our community, the same community that he took an oath to serve. I have no doubt that during his tenure on Brookhaven Borough Council, Terry Heller has served his community well and initiated to work on many positive projects. Unfortunately, this fiasco unfolding in Brookhaven must be resolved, and only Mr. Heller can do that by being accountable for his actions and doing the right thing. If Mr. Heller chooses not to resolve this issue, the, I feel that the, uh, elected, uh, council must. And I, I would, my, my own personal opinion is that, at the very least, Mr. Heller should not be representing, excuse me, me as president of council. If he wants to serve on council and that's what he wants to do, that's Mr. Heller's business. But I do not believe he should be in a position of authority or power as president.
Any other public discussion?
Hi, I feel that...
Your name, please.
Susan. Susan, the nomination show. I feel like the first person I've spoken, uh, representation was in the middle of that era. And I know this is best friend of great rest and it was very inappropriate. We lead by example. I went, Terry went on to Facebook and made public knowledge and younger police officers. That's when it became a war on social media. So for any of his friends or anybody who stand up here and to give good scolding to the entire community about Facebook, we lead by example. So it's very embarrassing. My friends and my family, I'm a nurse. We usually tend to marry police officers. Police officers will know other cities boroughs have contacted me saying, oh, my God, what's going on here in your town? It's really embarrassing. And it is. It's also embarrassing that we've allowed the president to run and have the vote. There is a conflict of interest and for us to allow that as residents to that, get appropriate and wrong. It was a conflict and we need to rethink about this. That is like me being arrested or something and then being sitting on the jury and deciding for myself. It needs to be redone on another date. We need to think about that. And I'm actually certain that there's activism and there's relegation here. I believe that we should re-vote and exclude the two people who have the same vaccine that are in the, in the news. It's not right, it's not fair. This is somebody's life that has a career here. Whether you guys like or vice or not, I don't know you personally, but this is somebody's career. Um, and how dare us decide that the person at hand decides somebody else's fate? You elect that investigation go on. But I think this is the sprays that we stack here and allow the vote to continue. NigelPlaughie.com, Mr. Burke, if you'd like to talk.
Actually, my camera drive. I have one question because the last couple of meetings. Mr. Wills, you've stated there's no bargain agreement and you were in talks of it. I want to ask tonight, was your collective bargain agreement signed with the exception that Michael Weiss is put on suspension?
There is. I'm sorry, will you repeat that question again?
So my question to you is, the last few meetings, the collective, collective bargain agreement was not signed.
That what we call a consolidated collective war. The collective bargaining agreement was executed. This consolidates, basically puts all the prior agreements into one agreement. So we did have, uh, what we call a collective bargaining agreement with the internal order of police. It has been signed, it has been executed. A consolidated collective bargaining agreement incorporates our new agreement with old agreements, also the agreement concerning the sergeants. That's what a consolidated collective bargaining agreement. So the answer to your question is yes, we did have a collective bargaining agreement.
That was not my question. My question is, you stated the last couple prior meetings that it was not signed and you were working on.
The consolidated collective bargaining...
But was that signature obtained with the promise of suspending Michael Weiss?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
David Hastings, could you move aside? You guys have talked about changing the, um, social media policies. What policy allowed our president to contact Daily Times as the president and make the allegations that we made? And how do you provide that from happening here? Because I feel like he was using his professional access to further personal agenda, not cargo business. Is there anything being put forth to address that?
That's correct. That's why we're meaning to help these best practices, so that we know...
You guys have talked about Facebook and whatnot, but this is Daily Times.
It's media policy, I'm sorry. It's media policy, not just social, not just Facebook, it's media policy.
Because I, I honestly see that as a piece of power. Where he used his professional access to media for a personal agenda. He didn't use it to further Brookhaven business. For less than a month. Thank you.
Here, here, elder, choosing to comment. Public discussion, we're going to make a motion to adjourn tonight. Do we have one?
I'll have to make the motion.
Do you have a second?